Mr. Hilbert, in your opinion, was the RFP in sufficient detail to specify winter hours? Or was it, is there room for a different interpretation?
I would say it was not clear at all as to winter hours, because they just left it blank. But that's something I think we felt could be negotiated, and it was. Want to throw this out, because it's not a straight bid, it's not apples to apples. You know, they're proposing a certain type of service, and all seasons proposed a certain type of service. So there is some valuation on each side. I think certainly if we'd moved forward, we would have, I don't think we'd have been able to move forward with a much, I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. I don't think we could have brought Brake Brothers forward without specific, either revision or something in writing about those winter hours. But because the committee voted to move all seasons forward, it didn't seem to me necessary to move, to get that information in writing from Brake Brothers at the time. We knew that engrading at the RFP was deficient, at least in our minds, in that area. But, you know, that's what we thought, I think, at the time.
Okay, well, you actually asked one of the questions that I was going to ask, and that I was going to ask you, Ms. McMillan, and you as well, Mr. Hilbert. Do you feel that the request for proposal process, which is different than a request for bid process, the, and I wish I had the item numbers or letters in front of me, but I don't, but do you, do you believe that the provision that allows you to waive irregularities, and the provision which says essentially that the city will negotiate the final contract after selecting a proposer or provider, do you believe that those two provisions being different in a request for proposal permit you to clarify, if you had have chosen Brake Brothers, would that have allowed you to confirm with them and add to their proposal the winter hours?
I think that could, would, the fact that we, if they were chosen by the council, then we would have to still come back with a contract, and the contract would have to include those winter hours. And if they, if Brake Brothers then came back to us and said, "No, we wouldn't do that at the same price," then we'd come back to the council and say we could not come to an agreement with the Brake Brothers under the provisions that we believe the council approved, and go back to the second proposer.
So you, just to clarify, you do confirm that you believe that those two provisions would allow you to make that adjustment to their proposal, or to either proposal, if that was the question?
I believe the provisions would allow the council to select them as the successful proposer, on the conditions that the staff can negotiate a reasonable contract that allows at least the same hours as what's provided today. And again, because we didn't select, the staff didn't select that as the, Brake Brothers as the proposer, it didn't seem necessary at the time to clarify that.
Okay. And I have another question, unless someone else, I'll let someone else speak first. Okay. Something that I hadn't considered, I have to admit, I hadn't read it that carefully, I guess. But one of the things that Mr. Shepherdley pointed out earlier in going through item by item in the request for proposal, he made mention of, I believe if I am saying this correctly, a paved entrance, and perhaps even a paved driveway. The property that was proposed by Mr. Brake, or the Brake Brothers, at this time, they do not have a lease on that property. That is something that they would obtain should they, it had been awarded to them, or at least that was their proposal. Do you know if any of those necessary improvements are made to that property, or would that be something that you would have to negotiate and confirm into the, into the agreement?
I would assume that once Brake Brothers had a lease for the property, they would, and a contract for the compost site, that they would install the improvements that are required in our RFP.
This kind of goes back a little bit to Councilman Mahalovich's, oh, what am I trying to say? His reference to the vagueness, and I don't know that he used that term, but of the RFP, or maybe it was even Councilman Prather that was concerned about the RFP itself. Do you have in the RFP, or is there a way, or does it mention any time that a person or a successful proposer would have to provide these site improvements? Is there any way to enforce that, or is that something that would have to be met before you would award the contract? Or would you award the contract with the idea that they could meet that at some future date?
It would be a condition that would be included in the contract. It'd be something they would have to include before they opened the site, or within a certain period of time. It's a city contract, so the city can basically say what it wants as far as the site improvements.
So that would kind of go back to that provision I was talking about earlier, where you negotiate those final wording and final provisions of the contract based on someone that you select? Okay. Mr. Hilbert?
It's probably worth noting, of course, there were three options available, and the staff suggested all seasons with option two, I think it was. But the council, if they so chose, could go with, of course, either bidder, proposer, but also any option for, for either of the options. And I'm not totally sure, but I think option one of the, Janice would know probably, option one of the all seasons is maybe not flat, but not a huge increase either, so.
Yes, that is another thing that has been, again, included in the one-on-one discussions that some of us have had, is the idea that perhaps the option one might be more preferred because it does have a lower annual rate than does option two. Would you explain for the council what the two options are?
Option one is a service that would allow residents of the city to bring their yard waste to the compost site free of charge. And it also would allow businesses to bring yard waste in, including landscape companies for a fee.
Okay.
And then option two would allow landscaping, is the same for residents, allowing residents to bring yard waste in free of charge. Also allows landscaping companies with a business license to bring in landscaping materials or yard waste free of charge, but charges out of town, out of towners for the use of that site.
Would you say option one is most close, closely resembles, even though it's not exactly the same, does it most closely resemble the service that we currently have today?
Well, currently, we allow landscaping companies that are registered as home occupations to bring in the, those materials at a free or at a reduced charge. So option one would start, charge, I would assume, under option one, all of the home occupations, all of the landscape companies would be charged to bring in yard waste.
And realistically, what is the probability that that is closely or even strictly enforced?
Well, you would have to ask Mr. Shepherdley, because he would be the one, his staff would be the one that would enforce it.
Actually, I did.
And it's very difficult.
I did talk to him about this today, and he acknowledged that it's a very difficult thing, and is probably not very strictly enforced. Not because they don't try necessarily, just because it's very difficult. Ms. Carol?
Thank you. A lot of the debate has focused on whether or not the request we got, or the information we received from Brake Brothers is clear or not. And really, what we, what's important is what the city presented in our RFP was clear. We asked for very specific things in that RFP, hours, different criteria. So we were completely clear. Now, we have something that came back to us that's vague. I know Janice mentioned in hindsight, we might do things different and ask them different questions. Well, I don't think there's any doubt. We shouldn't feel doubtful, we shouldn't feel like maybe we should have asked this or that. When there, any company submitting us a bid, this is their time to shine, this is their time to show us what they have to offer to us. If they left something out that big and that important, whether it was a mistake, an oversight, we need to take that into consideration and say, "The caliber of company we want to run our compost site should read through that very clearly, look at the RFP, and make sure they have included it. Maybe double-check it a few times, and make sure they're submitting us something that's absolutely clear." So it's not really our problem to guess and debate whether it was left in or out on purpose or not in follow-up. I think that was nice that staff did give them the benefit of the doubt, and go a little extra mile and try. But I think there are other factors, even in addition to the hours, that do make Chris Shepherdley's proposal better, including owning the site, and several other reasons as well. But I, I think that's their time. If something's left out, it kind of reflects a little bit on the company, and that also influences my decision. I want somebody to look at that RFP and answer it correctly. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Shulte?
Thank you. Mrs. McMillan, what is the difference between our current contract with all seasons and option number two of all seasons?
Currently, our annual fee is 212, is it the cost?
Right.
Two-hundred-and-twelve thousand is our current contract amount, annual. And year one of option two, I believe, was two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand?
That's correct. Okay, so $24,000 difference?
Correct.
How is that accounted for in the upcoming budget?
Well, there is an amount included in contractual services. I believe it's at the current rate, so we would have to find additional funds that are in the budget, or have the council allocate additional amount to cover that difference.
Okay. And just for clarification, option one is 212,000 as well?
It is, for the first year, that's correct.
And I believe each year, there's a $3,000 increase over the life of the agreement?
Correct.
One more question. Is there a performance bond included, Mr. Hilbert, with the bid?
Yes. I think, oh, there's a bid bond, no, yes.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions? Mr. Shulte?
After hearing all the debate, and listening to both proposers, Mr. Brake presented at the last council meeting, Mr. Shepherdley presented at this meeting, I think we've, all the council has received correspondence from, from both. But being in the business that I am, and having to bid on projects, there's many, many times I wish I could go back and have a redo. And I don't think that's the way the process works, or should work. And therefore, I would, I would like to make a motion, and in consideration of the budget, and where we're at, I'd like to make a motion that we accept option number one of all seasons' proposal in lieu of option number two that's currently in the bill at the $212,000, and that would maintain the current level of service that we have now today.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, so this motion would substitute option one for option two in the current bill. Is that correct? That's what your intent? Okay. Is there any debate?
And could you please read option one one more time for the record?
Sure. Ms. McMillan, do you have that?
Um, option one, year one is $212,000. Total for all five years would be 1,000, 1,090 dollars.
Okay. And, and it, I believe there's, maybe you don't have it right there in front of you, but I believe there's verbiage that indicates that all residents will receive their service free, and businesses will have to pay.
Will be charged, and out of town, right, yes.
And, yeah, if you're, if you live in the city, and you're a resident of the city, your service is at no charge?
That's correct.
Is that satisfactory, Mr. Graham? Okay. Mr. Hussey?
I just have a question for Ms. McMillan. This is a five-year contract, but it's annually renewable, correct?
Yes.
So it, does that come before the council on an annual basis to renew?
It does.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Mahalovich, I think that you'd indicated some desire to discuss perhaps some, perhaps reduce services or something. I think, would you be satisfied with the idea that we could discuss that during the upcoming year, and then if it's, if it is something that the council would decide, perhaps we could seek an amendment or something at some future date, future renewal date? Would that, would that work for you?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate or questions? Are we ready to vote on the motion? What I will do is, no, I won't have to either. If we vote on this, this will, this will be the ordinance that'll pass. So any questions? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Roll call, please. Pardon me?
Yes, it's really a motion to amend.
Okay, we, yes, it is a motion to amend.
The ordinance.
Do we need roll call for that?
You don't on a procedural motion.
Okay. Well, in that case, all in favor of the motion to substitute option one for option two, please make it known by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If motion passes. Okay, then, do we need to read it? Have we read it yet? Okay, we've already read it, so we will vote on, unless there's debate, we'll vote on the motion as amended. Roll call, please.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Shepherdley. The next item of a business is, where am I anyway? Okay, 2013-37.
An ordinance amending Chapter Seven, Boards and Commissions of the Code of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, by renaming the Mid-Missouri Property Assessed Clean Energy Development Board to the Missouri Clean Energy District.
Mr. Nicholas?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a board that we created, and it has been, although did not meet, has not been very successful in its original purpose, which we'd hoped it would do, a lot for residential energy savings. The board actually has been very successful, and has spread statewide, and it really is fairly independent of us. We don't fund it, we have a representative on the board, but that's about it. But it exists through our ordinances, therefore, they would like to change their name, and in order to change their name, the City Council of Jefferson City has to approve that. So this would be changing the name of that board.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Nicholas in regard to this bill? Rate a vote, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Okay, the bill passes. There is nothing on the informal calendar, number 18 resolutions, RS 2013-20.
A resolution authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to apply for an Historic Preservation Fund grant.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an opportunity to apply for a Historic Preservation Fund grant, offered through the State Historic Preservation Office of Missouri Department of Natural Resources, for the purpose of sending a staff member to the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions next year. Their annual, biannual meeting is in July 2014. This grant would pay for the travel expenses of this one staff member, and it's a reimbursable type of a grant, in that 60% of the total cost would be returned to the city, but the match is actually provided by the staff time. So we would ask your approval, so this could be, so we could file this application. We would come back to the council if we actually are selected to receive the grant for the final approval.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. McMillan? Okay, is this a?
We need a motion.
Roll call, please.
We need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion first, don't we? Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Now we'll have a roll call vote.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Shulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. Item 19, presentations from the gallery on other topics. All individuals will be limited to three minutes without exception. All presentations shall be made from the podium unless other accommodation is requested and granted. We only have two individuals who have signed up, and the first one on the list is Jennifer Turgen. Welcome, and please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Turgen, 123 East High Street Rear in Jefferson City.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. With feral cats, a hot topic right now, I thought this would be a good time to talk about my organization, Wild Things Feral Feline Fix. We are a trap-neuter return group here in Jefferson City, which means we set live traps to trap feral or wild cats. We have them spayed and neutered, rabies vaccination, and then we re-release them where we trapped them from, whether it be their colony, or their yard, or wherever they're, wherever they're living at. There's been a lot of discussion lately about what happens with feral cats when they're taken to the animal shelter. And being a compassionate person and a cat lover, of course, nobody likes to see an animal destroyed just for being, I mean, these cats aren't necessarily doing anything wrong, they're just not adoptable pets. There's, there's not a lot of options. You can allow the cats to just continue to breed and go about their business. You can attempt to find barn homes for the cats, but I can tell you, there are many, many more cats than there are available barn homes. You can continue to do what's happening now, where the cats are put down, or the option I prefer is the trap-neuter return. We have been doing this since January of 2010, and today, actually, we spayed and neutered our 415th cat. So I would like to think we're making an impact in the city on the feral cat population. There are only two of us doing this, two people, two dedicated volunteers, and a very limited budget, so we rely a lot on donations from the people who are feeding the cats or caring for these cat colonies. The Heart of Missouri Humane Society does support us also with our funding. I just wanted to kind of put a bug in your ear and let you know that I'm sure you've heard a lot from residents in the community recently about, about cats and wildlife in general. But there are over 1,000 communities throughout the United States that are currently and actively practicing TNR, and it, it really, really cuts down on the population of the cats. Once a colony is no longer breeding, then the cats naturally die off. You know, two to five years is an average lifespan for a feral cat, and the problem really kind of takes care of itself in a more compassionate manner than how it's currently being handled. So I just wanted to maybe let the council consider possibly Jefferson City having an actual city-operated TNR program through animal control. I don't know if that's an option, but I think that it's something that would make a lot of animal lovers and a lot of people in the community happy, to see the cats being treated in a more compassionate manner. The ones, the ones that are welcome, the ones that aren't hurting anything. And that's it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation, and we, are there any questions? Mr. Prather?
I appreciate what you're doing, it's very humane, and I was kind of curious, how much does it cost per animal to?
It depends, it depends on who will work with us. We currently have two local veterinarians that are doing all of our surgeries for us, and on average, we pay $50 per cat. And that's for the surgery and for the rabies vaccination.
Okay, Ms. Carol?
Thank you, Jenny. Do you know on the, the number, I believe you said about 1,000 other communities offer the same program? Are they mostly volunteer efforts, or do you know if they're done through their city?
There's actually a wide variety there. There are some animal control facilities who will take in the feral cats, only they are then signed over to a not-for-profit group similar to ours. So the city isn't the one actually, municipality isn't the one actually doing the service. It's transferred over to a non-for-profit. There are some communities, Spartonsburg, North Carolina, is actually a popular one right now, that received a grant through their animal control, and they are actually sending their animal control officers out on a daily basis doing the TNR themselves. So it's, it's workable. I mean, it could be something that the city does itself, it could be something that the city supports through an organization like Wild Things.
Thank you. I know the city has a group, and I forget what it's called, there's Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, I believe that's the name of it. It's made up of maybe three veterinarians. It's a small group, and I think they meet on an as-needed basis, but this might be an appropriate topic for one of their future meetings, if you could talk with them, and perhaps they could tap into the need and the resources that might be available in the community, that could form a nonprofit that, it would end up benefiting the city in the long run, because those animals aren't ending up in our shelter.
Right.
To be cared for, or euthanized, or whatever the case may be. But this might be something that they could address, and I don't know when they meet or who the staff liaison is, but perhaps that person could put you in touch with, with that committee. Thank you. Wonderful.
Any, anyone on this side? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, and the next person on the list is Jackie Fisher. Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Jackie Fisher. I live at 2207 Merlin Drive. I am here mainly for the, I am president of the Friends of the Jefferson Animal Shelter. And I feel like we need to make, give you an update on what we are doing. We've been asked a lot of questions on, you know, why are we still raising money? You know, we have this new shelter, what's going on, what are you using the money for? And that leads me to our mission statement, and that is to rescue, nurture, and adopt as many dogs and cats as possible into forever-loving homes, to promote the health and well-being of companion animals, to educate pet owners on the importance of spaying, neutering, and regular vet care, to encourage pet ownership as a lifetime commitment, and to share the joy that our pets offer. Since our inception in 2007, we have worked relentlessly towards our mission. We began by realizing the need for larger, safer, and more accommodating animal shelter. Our volunteers raised $225,000 for the new building, which opened in June of 2012. This new facility is well-equipped to assist the animals and the staff. It's beautiful, which increases the number of visitors and encourages adoptions. Distinct areas for the animals increase their comfort and their health while they await their forever home. We are currently hard at work landscaping the new building. We started by building a courtyard, which holds the memorial pavers our supporters have purchased. Then we had irrigation and sprinklers installed. Our volunteers, along with the Bittersweet Garden Club, have worked tirelessly digging, and more digging, planting and mulching, and spreading rock, and the finished project will be such a beautiful inviting for years to come. We continue to assist the animal shelter by purchasing enrichment items for the animals. The Friends pay for collars for every cat and dog, and that is to encourage their new owners to keep identification on their pets, which is extremely important. We have purchased cat dens for the more timid cats, giving them the ability to hide in their kennels, lowers their stress level, and improves their health. This allows visitors, we have provided dog dishes for the dogs which hang outside their kennels, which allows visitors to hand-feed the dogs, encouraging socialization and good behavior. We are currently researching a sound system to play soothing, continuous music to put the animals at ease during their stay. We are now focusing on spaying, neutering, and promoting veterinary care with our low-cost spay-and-neuter program. We are selling 120 vouchers this year for the low price of 20 bucks. We are selling a hundred and twenty vouchers this year for the low price of twenty bucks. This voucher allows the holder to take their pet to one of twelve local vets for spay or neuter, and the Friends pick up the bill for them. This, the decreased number of breeding pets will also de- decrease the number of animals needing homes. When someone learns that you're a part of the Friends group, they tend to come to you with, with questions relating to the animal shelter. Sometimes we can answer those questions and sometimes we give, uh, suggestions, but we don't have all the answers, as we are not involved in the day-to-day operations of the animal shelter. The Friends do not work for the shelter, we work with the shelter. We share the common goal of bettering the lives of pets in our community. The shelter employees do not have access to spend our funds, and we do not fund the day-to-day operations at the shelter. When a suggestion or request is made, whether by a volunteer or shelter employee, it is voted on by our board. Due to the generosity of our animal-loving community, we have been able to make big difference in the shelter animals and for other pets in the community. We hope this benevolent partnership continues to thrive from, for years to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no question that you have been a big part in helping the, uh, new shelter to become a reality. Uh, I know you've, you've worked for years to help, uh, raise funds and-
Yes.
-support the shelter, and, uh, I think sometimes we're amazed by, uh, how much the budget is to, uh, to take care of, of abandoned and, and, uh, animals.
Yes.
I, I don't know if you're aware or not, but I think the city budget's about three-quarters of a million dollars to operate the shelter and-
Yeah.
-certainly the impact that you have with the fundraising and the support and the, and the money that, that you're able to raise and spend, it's, it's very significant-
Yes.
...in the operation, and, and certainly, I want to thank you, uh, as an individual, but also, uh, as a representative of the council.
Yes.
We thank you very much.
Thanks.
Is there any other comments or questions, Mr. Mahalovic?
A couple, well, um, I was unaware, uh, that it was that amount, quarter million dollars, or two hundred and twenty-five, is that what you said?
Two hundred and twenty-five, yes.
Uh, that is impressive. Um, also, could you reread your mission statement?
Yes.
If you please.
Uh, our mission is to rescue, nurture, and adopt as many animals, as many dogs and cats as possible into forever-loving homes, to promote the health and well-being of companion animals, to educate pet owners on the importance of spaying, neutering, and regular veterinary care, to encourage pet ownership as a lifetime commitment, and to share the joy that our pets offer.
I think that's terrific, and I, and I, uh, I also heard you say that, uh, our shelter shares those goals.
Yes.
Would it be, I don't know if it's written or not, but, um, and I'd hope that we would, be measuring those goals and being able to, 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 to meet those, uh, those, uh, mission statement as you described it-
Yes.
...and the goals that we have.
Yes.
Are you, have you, did you go to the advisory committee today?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Were you given some time to speak?
No. We weren't, no.
Uh, I would hope that also with that kind of a commitment dollar-wise, that we, we can accept your input in some fashion, whether it be advisory or otherwise-
Right.
-and that you continue to guide, uh, and assist us and-
Mm-hmm.
-in, in mutual goals.
Um, as of right now, um, the adoption rate for the adoptable animals at our shelter is at one hundred percent, and that's, that's pretty darn good. It's very good for our shelter, and that's adoptable animals.
Are there any other questions or comments? And we thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, council and staff discussion of presentation topics, is there any further comments or discussion? If not, we'll move on to, uh, new business, is there any new business to discuss? Uh, unfinished business. Uh, Mr. Mahalovic?
Um, I was, uh, pleased to find that on the website we have, uh, some conference center update, and I'd, uh, asked for a quick update on the conference center.
I can do that. Oh, had a important week, I think, last week, uh, the facilitator was down and Mr. Johnson met, had three, uh, quite productive meetings, I think. The first was a half, a couple hours, half-day work session with, uh, the Farmer Brothers, uh, where he drilled down on their proposals, uh, got a little bit further, understands their position and their proposal better. Uh, he's asked them for yet even more information, and they're working on that. Uh, the next day they met with the Earhart Group, and, uh, the same is true for the Earharts, that we, he spent considerable time drilling down on their proposal, uh, getting a better idea what their financing is, and, and sent them home with a lot of homework, too. Uh, they're going to be corresponding with each other over the next couple of weeks. And another really, really productive meeting, I think, was he held a, a forum with, uh, the people who are charged with planning the events for their, for their organizations. I think we had, what, maybe, uh, ten people there, Nathan, if I recall correctly? Uh, somewhere around there. And the more we're invited, some sent some co- some folks sent in some comments by email, and the real value of that is those are the people who are using the conference center. So, uh, we, uh, got what they expect from them with a, you know, some, a little bit surprising results on some of the things they wanted and didn't want, and I wouldn't spoil that, I'd let him share that with you when he, when he's ready. Uh, I, I think he's planning to really get down to the brass tacks with the two developers over the next couple of weeks and, and be able to commit to you, uh, sometime in August where he thinks their proposals are, and, uh, of course, uh, there'll also be some other studies that he'll be doing, uh, soon, that'll assist the, uh, assist the, uh, proposer, so, it's kind of an update on a productive week that he keeps working on.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Mr. Hilpert? Any questions for Mr. Hilpert? Thank you, Mr. Hilpert. Um, we are coming to item twenty-three, which is, um, go into closed session pursuant to section six-ten dot O-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri. The council will go into closed session, discuss the following legal action, section six-one-oh dot O-two-one dot one. Do I have a motion to go into closed session? We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of go into closed session, please make known-
Is it roll call?
It is roll call, please, roll call.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?[1774.64]